Good evening. Welcome to the Township of Lacey Caucus Meeting, August 11, 2022. I have been noticed this meeting has been given according to the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws, 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press in the Beacon, was posted on the bulletin board, showing the time and place of the meeting. We start our meeting with a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, proclamation for Eagle Scout.
Aiden, would you like to come up front? He's like, do I have to? Whereas the rank of Eagle Scout is one of the highest honors a member of the Boy Scouts of America can receive, and whereas only 4% of all Boy Scouts receive this honor, and whereas in order for Aiden Devaney to receive this rank, he refurbished the Lenoka Harbor School Playground Blacktop area, repainting the maps and adding new games for children's enjoyment. And whereas Aiden Devaney, his fellow scouts, the leaders of Boy Scout Troop 56, as well as family members and friends donated approximately 102 hours to complete the project. Whereas Aiden received monetary donations from family and friends and supplies from local businesses to help fund this project. And whereas his efforts have been cited by the President of the United States, the Governor of the State of New Jersey, the State Senate, the General Assembly, and the Ocean County Board of Freeholders, uh, Commissioners, excuse me. And whereas the Mayor and Township Committee wish to commend and congratulate Aiden Devaney on receiving this high honor, and whereas the Mayor and Township Committee would like the accomplishments and dedication of this young individual to be an example for all those involved in scouting and thank him for a project well done. Now therefore, I, Mark Dykoff, Mayor of the Township of Lacey, on behalf of myself and the Township Committee, honor Aiden Devaney for his outstanding accomplishments and encourage other scouts to follow in his example.
So as is customary, before we move on, I'm going to hand it off to members of the committee, because I know we are all very proud of any Eagle Scout who comes through this room. So, Mr. McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. Aiden, I'm sure that I will see you on the trip to Alaska. That's an inside joke with his father. My son is an Eagle Scout and remember, Mr. Devaney's, true, dead, whatever. And he made a promise to my son, who's now 32, that if he made Eagle Scout, he would take him to Alaska. So, I will be, I will be on that trip. I'll go with you. How many merit badges?
Too many to count.
What do you got? Thirty-three, thirty-four?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine. What was the hardest merit badge you did?
Probably life suit.
What was your favorite merit badge?
I really liked hiking.
So, let me just tell you what the Eagle Scout Award is going to do for you. It's going to open doors that you can't even imagine. You're going to throw that on your resume, and when I was director of recruiting for a major company in Jersey, I saw an Eagle Scout, that resume went to that pile there. They admitted I've always got the job, but they always got an interview, because I wanted to see what they made of me. Should you choose to go into the military, you automatically get a stripe, and that means extra money. And I've always told this story, that when my son went in as a firefighter, he won the cross training, he's now a special agent for United States Air Force. He went to cross training, you've got to go see the base commander. So he shows up in his blues, he's pitch on his shoes and everything else like that. Twenty-minute meeting. He gets in there, turns out, the base commander was an Eagle Scout. They didn't talk about anything else, but their scouting adventures that they had. So, you will open this up, you'll get the Eagle magazine, you'll get everything else like that, and you're going to be stunned by the members, by people you find as you walk through life, who are also Eagle Scouts. It's a heck of an achievement, and I congratulate you. And I congratulate Mom and Dad too, because without them, this doesn't happen.
Thank you, Mayor. Soft spot in my heart for our scouts, girl and boy scout. Nine years ago, Mr. Devaney won't remember this, but I was brand new on the committee. It was Thursday was the first meeting, Saturday was the Soapbox Derby at Lenoka Harbor Firehouse. It was my first event as an official, and it brought me right back to the days of Cub Scouts and things like that. And so, I always had a lot of respect for Devaney's for mentoring so many, you just heard Deputy Mayor talk about, and his son's 32. So it's been a long, long time, and you know, what you achieved, we need you to tell that story and impart some of that knowledge and wisdom off on kids nowadays, because a lot of kids, they're having a hard time finding their way nowadays. They need a guy like you to help them along. So you're a shining star, you're a superstar of ours. We do this so many times. Other towns, I'm sure, don't have the amount of Eagle Scouts we have. So I wish you the very, very best, and thank you and your family, Mr. Devaney, and God bless you, and good luck to you.
Yes, I just wanted to say, Aiden, thank you. Just thank you. It's as simple as that, because it's not too often said to a young man that stepped up and did something really nice for our town. So appreciate it, and to your parents, the same thing. Thank you.
That can't be the same blacktop when I was there in first grade, Penny. I vaguely remember the games they had on there. Do you have a picture? I kind of want to see what it looks like. We always had to stand right against the wall there when we got picked for kickball.
Did you get picked, Steve?
Yeah, I was like, third or fourth. Bring it up, just bring it up. Did you resurface the blacktop? Oh, they did that. Looks good.
Very nice.
We should have said yes, Aiden.
But congratulations, great job.
As was mentioned by Mr. Curatolo, it amazes me as how many Eagle Scouts we have coming through before us, and we honor our proclamations. And of course, it's close to your parents, and of course, the scouting program in this township is just churning out, and we're so proud of you. If anyone has not attended a quarter of honor for Eagle Scout, it's truly, truly an impressive event, and I hope you all get to witness it, I have, and the pride in the fellow scouts' support. And that's where it all comes from. It comes from your family, your friends, your fellow scouts, and the camaraderie. So of course, as Mr. McDonald mentioned, it opens doors for you. It's just the beginning. So congratulations to you, to your family, and to the whole scouting program in Lacey. Thank you. Now I'm going to make you stay, because we've got a couple of very, very nice items coming up on this agenda, right up your alley. So item number two, swearing in of officers, Lieutenant McKee and Lieutenant Flynn. I'll call up Chief Devella, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
First, I'd just like to welcome everybody here this evening. It's a very special night for our police department. We have ceremonies for promotions, as well as new hires. Appreciate all my officers that were here this evening, retired, great to see you. Law enforcement from other agencies, Sheriff's Office, obviously friends and family and, you know, our residents, public being here tonight, and supporting these promotions and hires in the police department. And I'd also like to thank our governing body, Veronica, you know, for the continued support of the Lacy's Police Department. So thank you. And with that, I'm going to call up John Stewart. I feel like I just did this.
Maybe it wasn't him.
It was another guy. It was another handsome guy. It was a 2020, but it feels like it was just him. It comes over the age. John's been a resident of Lacey Township for the last 26 years. He attended Stockton University. He was hired by the Lacey Township Police Department in March of 2003, where he attended the Burlington County Police Academy. He graduated that October, and he graduated number one in his class in academics. Definitely some will certainly be proud of him. In 2019, John took the New Jersey Civil Service Sergeants Exam, where out of approximately 1,000 police officers statewide, John came out number one in the state. I've talked about this lots of times during our promotional ceremonies. So much really goes into studying for this promotional exam. You know, we basically lock ourselves in a room for six months at a time, and our families are always there, they're supporting us, and we couldn't do it without our families. So I want to thank you again for that. On February 27, 2020, John was promoted to the rank of Sergeant, and was assigned as a Patrol SWAT Supervisor. In 2021, yet again, John took the New Jersey Civil Service Lieutenant's Exam, where out of hundreds of sergeants, he scored in the top 10 in the state. Throughout his career, John has received several commendations and awards, including the Grand Corde Ribbon Award in October 2012. In John's own words, his greatest accomplishment, and what brings joy to his life for his three wonderful children, Brittany, Alexa, and John, along with his two grandchildren, Ryan and Tegan. John is very thankful for his family and the opportunity to be promoted to Lieutenant for the Lacey Township Police Department. Congratulations, Lieutenant. I can give a shout.
We're going to give a shout.
Try it. What could possibly go wrong?
What could possibly go wrong?
So you are going to raise your right, because you have to, you're just going to repeat after me. Hi, John McKee.
Hi, John McKee.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of Police Lieutenant.
Perform all the duties of Police Lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
To the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people so help me God.
Under the authority of the people so help me God.
Robert has lived in Lacey Township for the past 25 years, and has been married to his wife Jenna for 14. They have two sons, Madison Hudson and their daughter Thea. Rob served eight years in the United States Army Reserves, earning an honorable discharge in 2000. He earned a Bachelor of Science degree from Pennsylvania State University in 1997, and a Master of Arts, a Master of Arts degree from Seton Hall University in 2009. Robert was hired by the Lacey Township Police Department in 2001, and throughout the past 20 years, he has served in various positions throughout both the Patrol Division and Administration, and most recently in the Training and Services Bureau. Rob was assigned to the position of Acting Sergeant in January 2015, promoted to Sergeant on February 23, 2017, and then again to Provisional Lieutenant last year, July 2021. Robert has an extensive background as it relates to training, including but not limited to our field training program and firearms. He has served in the Ocean County Regional SWAT Team as a crash investigator and reconstructionist for the Ocean County Fatal Accident Support Team, and a drug recognition expert, DRA in the county. Robert is only one, Robert is one of only a few police officers in New Jersey to have earned accreditation as a crash reconstructionist by ACTLIN. Robert has been heavily involved in many other department functions, to include the Cop Card Program, prior DUI checkpoints, Honor Guard, and our Junior Police Academy. In addition, throughout his career, he has received numerous commendations and awards, including the Grand Corde Ribbon Award in 2012, the Drug Buster Award in 2013, and the Exceptional Duty Citation Award Award in 2016. Congratulations, Lieutenant, for the award.
Hi, Robert Flynn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of Police Lieutenant.
Perform all the duties of Police Lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States and in this state.
And to the government established in the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people so help me God.
Under the authority of the people so help me God.
Congratulations.
Well, they keep moving up the ladder, that's a good thing. These are the best for the best, because I probably believe, and said all along, I think that we have the best police force in the state of New Jersey. These gentlemen, those Rob and Damian John, they've earned it, they've earned it, they've earned it, and they have been leaders, and they're going to lead, and you'll soon see that we'll be hiring later in this meeting, some replacements for them at the patrol level. And you guys are going to be responsible for training and keeping us, training them how to keep Lacey Township safe. So with that, I congratulate, congratulate both of you, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations to our lieutenants. You know, it's hard not to love everyone, all of you, and there's a special bond, we all do, with all of you in the room. Feel safer because you're here. You two guys, along with everyone else, universally beloved, most importantly, respected. You've been mentors, leaders to young men like our Eagle Scout, you've been in our schools, in educatives, you've done prevention work. So it goes way, for me, way past law enforcement, and I know I don't speak alone, everyone feels the same way. We love having you guys here. You've had my, my family's back, living in this town, you've had everybody's back, and all I need to do is, is call. I'm not, going to not be there for you. Love you guys, thanks for everything, and I hope God walks with you every day. Thank you.
I'm just so proud to be here and share this moment with both of you. It's an honor, that's all I can say. Anything in blue, and I wore my blue tonight to support the blue, because I just think that it's, it should be our honor to be here and support them all. So thank you and congratulations to both of you.
I'm going to cede my comments to the young girl on the yellow. You're both very accomplished, you should be proud of all the hard work and time you put in to get to your position. Congratulations and best of luck.
So, I've known quite a few of you personally, and aside from, you know, the presentation you all make as police officers, as I listened to the two of you being sworn in, I couldn't help, I couldn't help but see this distinct difference. Lieutenant McKee was a little more relaxed, and Lieutenant Flynn was. And it's interesting, you all bring something different, you know, and that's what makes it great, you know? I mean, people forget that there are people behind the uniforms. So proud of you guys. Chief Devella, thank you for facilitating the promotion of these two gentlemen. I just want to point out that, taking issue, this is your first promotion, or no, you did a promotion?
Yes, I did.
Okay, but you're hiring, so pretty good, huh?
Yeah, I love it.
Pretty good. Okay, but listen, thank you all, thank you gentlemen for taking over the leadership to train these new officers who will be hiring tonight, and I know they'll follow in the footsteps of all the great work that you do. Thank you very much. Item number three, Resolution 2022-217, Appointing of Police Officers.
Resolution of Township of Lacey County, Board of State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of John Labat, Dan Primavera, Daniel Primavera, Nicole Tamboro, and Timothy Swain as full-time police officers with the Township of Lacey. Can I have a motion, please?
No. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Canis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dykoff?
Yes.
I'd like to call up Chief Devella at this time?
For the introductions, just to be made out this evening, I have Lieutenant Kenny, who we got doing the first two, and followed by Lieutenant Sullivan for second. Lieutenant Kenny?
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it. Thanks everybody for coming. First up, John Labat.
Yes.
All right, so John comes to us with seven years' experience as a correctional police officer. He was hired in 2015 with the State Corrections, and his last assignment was with Mid-State Correctional Facility. Prior to that, John, he attended, sorry about that.
That's all right, that's all right.
No, but prior to that, John, he graduated from Towns River High School in 2004. So from there, he attended Ocean County College, and transferred to Montclair State University, where he graduated with a Bachelor of Arts degree in Criminal Justice. So he did from there, he got a job as a Class 1 Special Officer in Seaside Park to start his police career, and I believe in that time, he probably met his wife, Michelle, Michelle, and decided to take another path and looked for another career. Always wanting to be a police officer, always kept that on the back burner. He moved to Lacey Township, ended up getting married in 2012, where he's been resident ever since, and he, he kept pursuing his career as law enforcement officer. He kept that in his mind, and that's what he always wanted to do, and found a niche with the correctional police officer, and then he came and always wanted to pursue and follow his dream of being a police officer. So I know what John said that he was, he said that, he wanted to, he wanted to follow his dream to become a police officer, and why he wanted to do that was because of his family. He said, you know, his family is everything to him, and that he wanted to make them proud. So, here he is. His hobbies are, he likes to workout, loves baseball, and spending time with his family and his. And pretty much, we're glad to have him here. He's one of three that has to go to the police academy, so he's starting in the police academy in September. It's 24 weeks, and he, he's going to graduate, I believe, about one times three, 24 times three.
As many as fifty-five, he's going to have to start like working out.
Go ahead, that's a good one. Cameras and pictures, you ready? You're going to place your hand on the Bible and raise your right, and you will take, for me. I, John Labat.
I, John Labat.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of police officer.
Perform all the duties of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States and in this state.
And to the government established in the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people so help me God.
Under the authority of the people so help me God.
Congratulations. You know what, you want some pictures of the family and stuff, yeah? Family step there so he can take some pictures. Go ahead. There's some family. Here we go, about three, nice six mile, one, two, three. Beautiful. And one more, one. Beautiful. One more, one, two. Thank you. Very nice, very nice.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you, it's okay. He caught it.
Congratulations. Congratulations, local board.
We're ready for the next one. All right, Bill Exring, the mayor, let's step forward, please. All right, Dan Primavera, he comes to us from the South Towns River Police Department. He has three years' experience there. When he excelled in was community policing. He had a niche in community policing, and he had a lot on for that. So prior to that, he did work as a Class 1 Special in Brick Township Police Department in 2016, right up to 2019, when he was picked up by South Towns River Police Department. Prior to that, John grew up in Secaucus, New Jersey, where he attended a high school, graduating Secaucus High School in 2006, and what he liked to do, and what he followed his dream at the time, in motorcycle technician. He went down to Florida, where he attended the Motorcycle Mechanic Institute, 63-week course in Florida. Laughed, laughed. Came back, and for 12 years, he, he received his Master Technician Certification at Harley-Davidson. Wow. So while there, he met some police officers while fixing motorcycles, and really felt like that's what he wanted to do with life, and pursued his career. He moved down to Ocean County in 2011, and he applied, took the Civil Service Test for South Towns River Police Department, and was hired. Moved to Lacey Township in 2011 with his fiancee Karen, Catherine, and where he resides with her and her, and their two children, two daughters. So prior to, prior to coming to, our, our, prior to coming to our police department, he also, he also. Yeah, he also works, you know, like I said, as a class, as a Class 1 Officer, came to us, and now his hobbies include motorcycles, I don't know, he serves Fisher, and he's, you know, he loves his family, and he loves spending time with his family, and here he is. Now John has three daughters. We got a lot of girls. We got a lot of girls. So Sandra, let's get some pictures there. You want to hand on the Bible, raise your right, you just have to repeat after me. I, Dan Primavera.
I, Dan Primavera.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of police officer.
Perform all the duties of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States and in this state.
And to the government established in the United States and in this state...
And to the government established in the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of people, so help me God.
Under the authority of people, so help me God.
Congratulations.
You got a nice six mile, count three.
All right, I got the easy one, the younger one, so we'll not lie this way. Your old Tim, work, one up. So Nicole Tamboro, twenty-six years old, graduated Lacy Township High School in 2014. She'll be our third female officer. She has, she has big shoes to fill moving forward. Our last two, I was able to work with, and, you know, I think, I think Nicole's gonna fit in just fine. After 2014, joined the National Guard, correct? All right, so 2014, joined National Guard, but she still remains as a member of the National Guard. 2017, joined Seaside Heights Police Department as a Class 2. They sent you through the academy, I assume, at that point? After that, joined Ocean County Sheriff's Office, where she was a crime scene investigator for the last four years. She worked the most overtime in the Sheriff's Department for the last several years. So some of these younger guys that we have here are, can't wait for you to get on the road, take some of their work, so they're there. As far as, should be badge number 123. 123, so she's gonna join us and start an interview, and we're ready to go. Nicole Tamboro?
Are you angling?
Yes, we have to make sure you get in the camera shot. Yes. You just gotta repeat after me, just following what the other gentleman did. I, Nicole Tamboro...
I, Nicole Tamboro.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully...
That I will faithfully...
Impartially...
Impartially.
And justly...
And justly.
Perform all the duties of police officer...
Perform all the duties of police officer.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States and in this state...
And to the government of the United States and this.
In this state. Under the authority of people, so help me God.
Under the authority of people, so help me God.
Congratulations.
These people.
Here you go, guys, ready, count three, one, two, three. And one more, one, two, three. Perfect, very happy.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
On a side note, before she sits down, you should hear her voice.
Sing it for tonight, huh?
Sing it, so.
Tim Swain, come on up. I'm just gonna let Tim sit up here for a second, because he loves, he loves this spot. He doesn't get nervous at all. I'm just in this police interview, and they get nervous. So, all right, Tim comes to us from Lacy Township High School, graduated in 2017, the ALSS program. You guys were the first full-time class down there?
Yes.
So he spent two years, freshman sophomore year at the high school, then spent two years down in Waretown in the Law Public Safety Program. So Tim knew right away what he wanted to do. He's been driven to do this for his career, and taken all the right steps, puts us here at twenty-three, almost twenty-four years old, so he's one of the base group of them. Tim was part of the Ocean County Explorer Program, which is the, now the cadet program, which Chief Devella, Chief Devella got us involved with right away, that's how we ended up, you know, meeting Tim and working with him. Nice young man. At the end of high school, he came right to us as a Class 1 Special. Spent a year or two with us as a Class 1 Special, we put him through the Class 2 Academy. Did well in the academy, worked with us for another year or so, ended up at the Sheriff's Department as an investigator, correct? So where you still remain as an investigator until tonight. Tim, today has achieved his, his goal of being a full-time police officer in Lacy Township. He's worked really hard to get here, we're proud of you, Tim. And, you know, we're happy, he's one of our homegrown guys, he's one of the people that we invested in right from the beginning, and, you know, paid off for you. Congratulations.
Make sure you get it, so you know we can get some pictures. All right, Tim, you just gotta repeat after me. I, Timothy Swain...
I, Timothy Swain.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully...
That I will faithfully...
Impartially...
Impartially.
And justly...
And justly.
Perform all the duties of police officer...
Perform all the duties of police officer.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And I will support the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
And bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States and in this state... Under the authority of people, so help me God.
Under the authority of people, so help me God.
And one more thing, too, Tim, Tim's in the United States Air Force, I forgot to mention that. Sergeant of the Air Force. It's lucky we remembered Air Force.
It's good, it's straight, you know?
Let's get some pictures of all of us.
Straighten your mouth, though. Give it to him, buddy.
I go count of three, four.
Very nice.
So you got a lot of say comments?
Comments, Mr. McDonald, once again.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome aboard. As I said earlier, I firmly believe that this is the finest police force in the state of New Jersey. Four new, four new officers, some experienced, some non-experienced, but they will be trained properly, they know how to do their job properly. And as I was sitting up here, listening to their resumes and biographies and so forth, the word diversity kept coming. We've got them all over the map. We've got them, two from Lacy High School, which I really like, because they know where bad guys hang out. Especially the high school. They know where, they know where the hiding spots are. Then we've got the older guys, who'll come in, and they will learn that. It's, 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 it's a tough job, and it's getting tougher every day. You talk to the chief, he'll tell you that the state attorney general likes to issue orders, doesn't he, chief? And it becomes almost impossible to do this job, but they get it done. And look around you to all these men in blue, in the suits and the ties and everything else like that, and think about them when you put your head on the pillow tonight, because they're the ones keeping us safe. Thank you, congratulations.
Kurtolo.
Thank you, Mayor. When you hear our lieutenants talk about these, our new officers in such glowing terms, the opportunity to have homegrown talent, we've observed, worked with, mentored folks, and now, you know, when you cultivate a tree, you start at the roots, you all did that. And it's a really, really, that's, that's the way this works, you know? Wisdom comes up, the tires goes out the door, but you're, you're building the future right in front of us here tonight. But in particular, I don't have favorites, but people know me, I only have one daughter, so I'm particularly proud, is my first female officer that we've hired since I've been here, and I'm very, very proud. Hope she takes the time to talk to my daughter and impart some wisdom. But so proud of everyone, and I really, really mean that. And I wish, you know, the young gentlemen are just here as sergeants in the Air Force, just so many Iraq veterans and fellas that just keep on coming through with such high quality. So I'm grateful, and thanks for keeping us safe. God bless you all, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, first of all, I'm grateful, that's a great word, grateful for this, the four new folks on our force here. Couldn't be any prouder to have you joining us, and thank the chief for his, bringing out all his men here, and it's just a wonderful thing to see all of them here, and our two lieutenants that handled this tonight, thank you for that, too, appreciate that. But most of all, to the families of these four, thank you, because it's...
Kenneth.
Welcome to the Lacy Township Police Department. That's it.
So the good thing, the bad thing about speaking last, and the good thing, the bad thing is, well, you know, things are already said, but the good thing is, some words resonate. And one of the words that resonated by Ms. Curatolo was diversity. And I mentioned it before with the two lieutenants, and I sat now, and I listened to the rest of them, and try and imagine the diversity that they bring to the force, and their experience, you know, what a senior officer. Unlike Ms. Curatolo, I have daughters, so I'm kind of, so I'll spot for all the daughters. She can come anytime she wants. But, but the other thing that gets me...
Terrible, too, she'll thunder.
As they come up, the pride in the families. And over and over again, I, that, that resonates with me, and it comes to mind, as, and I've been here quite a long time, and been here for quite a few swearing-ins, and quite a few promotions, and I see the pride on the faces, and that, that's what really gets me. And God bless you all, welcome to the police department, and thank you very much. If you have time, we'll take a short recess and allow everybody to file out, unless you want to stay for thirty-six items.
Thank you.
Want me to pause this?
There you go. Thank you.
Good job. There's gonna be nobody left. Maureen, I'm sorry to drag you through all this tonight. I know. How we just leave the house? It got really warm in here. Thanks again, everyone. Congratulations. Thank you.
Ms. Kenneth, Joan Road.
Recording.
Item number five, special use permit, beauty bar.
All right, on forty-four Manchester, the beauty bar is looking to hold an outdoor emotional event in the front plaza there, which is a dirt area with a tent. It has been reviewed by zoning, it is for August eighteenth with a rain date of the twenty-fifth. It had, like I said, zoning hasn't reviewed it, and they have approved it. Can I have a motion to approve?
Check it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any add-ons?
I have no add-ons, so we can take a motion to adjourn for this meeting?
Move it, second.
Favor?
Aye.
Good evening, everybody, welcome to the township, Lacy Township, meeting August eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Happy to have you in this meeting, and from giving the court...
Hey, Dan, can you shut those doors for me? Thank you.
The Old Public Meetings Act pursuant to public law, nineteen seventy-five, said notice was advertised, the ad park, park, press, and the beacon, it was posted on the bulletin board, showing the timing, place, and the meeting, the star, the suit, and the flag, and all the silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Item number one, first reading ordinance, twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six, authorizing the purchase of block eighteen fifty-two, lots three and four.
Norance, the Township of Lacy County, Volusia State, New Jersey, authorizing the purchase of block eighteen fifty-two, lots three and four, on Bell Street pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon twelve dash five. This is a non-conforming lot, we are purchasing it for nine thousand dollars through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund in order for us to make this part of Walters Development Phase Three. Can I have a motion on the first reading?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, item number two, first reading ordinance, twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven, amending and supplementing chapter one thirty-five, animals, to so as to regulate the keeping and raising of chickens and other fowl.
Norance, the Township of Lacy County, Volusia State, New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter one thirty-four, the Township Code of the Township of Lacy entitled Animals So As To Regulate The Keeping And Raising Of Chickens And Other Fowl. We have quite a large influx of residential neighbors, neighborhoods that are raising chickens in their yard, and of course, they are not complying with setback requirements for the coops. We've received a lot of complaints from neighbors, so now we are instituting regulations and registration with regards to chickens and other fowl. There will be a twenty-dollar registration fee, there will be no roosters allowed. As to chickens, depending on your lot size, you will be limited to the number of chickens that you can have, which is, if you have point two zero of an acre, it would be six chickens, larger than that, it would be twelve chickens, and anything above that, you can have a total of twenty. There will be no grandfathering, so while you may have a rooster now, once he passes on, you will not be able to replace him. If you have eight chickens now, you're only allowed to six, once they pass on, you can't replace and get to more. Then there's all the standards for keeping of those chickens as well. So this is what's going to happen in the residential neighborhoods, and we also, in the future, will be looking at other farm animals, such as goats and pigs. Can we have a motion on first reading?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
I'm standing.
And Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, item number three, second reading of ordinance, twenty twenty-two dash twenty-four, authorizing the purchase of block eighteen fifty-three, lots sixteen and seventeen.
Norance, the Township of Lacy County, Volusia State, New Jersey, authorizing the purchase of block eighteen fifty-three, lots sixteen and seventeen, on Calvin Street pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon twelve dash five. This is a forty-by-hundred non-conforming lot that we are purchasing in the area in need of redevelopment for Lacy Cornerstone Walters Development Group Phase Three for the amount of forty thousand dollars. This is coming out of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Second reading?
Open the floor, public comment, seeing no make motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, item number four, second reading ordinance, twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five, amending chapter three thirty-five, so as to amend section, the section related to electric vehicle charging station.
Norance, the Township of Lacy County, Volusia State, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Article Three of Chapter three thirty-five entitled General Regulations To Authorize And Encourage Electric Vehicle Supply Service Equipment And Make Ready... and Make Ready Parking Spots So As to Amend Section three through five point twenty-two dash three E one, Minimum Parking Requirements and Section three thirty-five point twenty-two dash three F six, Usage Fees. The two items that were amending minimum parking requirements, we had to type on with regards to the chapter in the code book that it refers to when it talks about parking, which is chapter two eighty-five. And then the usage fees, as to the fees that can be charged, we changed the ordinance to say that it would be changed via a resolution versus another ordinance. Second reading?
Open the floor, public comment. See, no make a motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth? Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have number five, Resolution two thousand twenty-two, dash two eighteen, appointing a clerk for community development and code enforcement.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Motion State of New Jersey, appointing Dana DeBella to the position of clerk for the township of Lacy. Miss DeBella is currently a part-time clerk for the code enforcement officer. We are putting her on full time and she will split her day between code enforcement and the Department of Community Development.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have number six, Resolution two thousand twenty-two, dash two nineteen, appointing a clerk for community development.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Motion State of New Jersey, appointing Corinne Vincenzi to the position of clerk in the Department of Community Development for the township of Lacy. This is due to a vacancy that we never replaced in two thousand twenty when the pandemic hit. We were not sure how the pandemic was going to affect us financially, so we're bringing that staff back. We also thought at the time with toll barriers being complete and finished that we would see a slowdown in our building department and the exact opposite has happened. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have number seven, Resolution two thousand twenty-two, dash two twenty, authorizing a leave of absence.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Motion State of New Jersey, authorizing a leave of absence for Catherine Danduno in accordance with the Family Medical Leave Act.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have number eight, Resolution two thousand twenty-two, dash two twenty-one, certifying qualified participants for the Lo Sap benefits for the year two thousand twenty-one.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Motion State of New Jersey, certifying the list of volunteer firefighters and emergency service squad members who have qualified for the length of service award program benefits for the year two thousand and twenty-one. This is for the first aid and fire companies with regards to the qualifying members. We had in two thousand twenty-one, a hundred and eighty members qualify. The amount of the Lo Sap award is a hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars.
Move it. Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have number nine, Resolution two thousand twenty-two, dash two twenty-two, awarding a contract for the Hebrew Park Pickleball Court Project.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Motion State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for the Hebrew Park Pickleball Court Project to shore top construction. We are able to award the entire bid, base bid, alternate one, two, and three for a total amount of a hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. This will get us three new courts in the Hebrew Park.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have number ten, Resolution two thousand twenty-two, dash two twenty-three, awarding a contract for the purchase of one two thousand twenty-three Ford Explorer to winter Ford.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Motion State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of one two thousand twenty-three Ford Explorer X L T in the amount of forty-three thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana? Uh, Mrs. Juliana, I am so sorry.
It's okay. It's all right. Yes.
Uh, Mr. McDonald, I mean, uh, Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Now you threw me off, thrown off now. Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes. I have number eleven, Resolution two thousand twenty-two, dash two twenty-four, awarding a contract for the purchase of two two thousand twenty-two Ford F two fifty pickups to winter Ford.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Motion State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of two two thousand twenty-two Ford F two fifty Supercab pickups with eight and a half foot western snowplows to winter Ford. The total amount of this is one hundred and twenty-three thousand, sixty-six dollars.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have number twelve, Resolution two thousand twenty-two, dash two twenty-five, awarding a contract for the purchase of one two thousand twenty-two F five fifty utility body truck with a snowplow to winter Ford.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Motion State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of one two thousand twenty-two Ford F five fifty with nine foot aluminum utility body and nine foot western snowplow to winter Ford in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have number thirteen, Resolution two thousand twenty-two, dash two twenty-six, awarding a contract for the purchase of one two thousand twenty-two F five fifty dump body truck with a salt spreader to winter Ford.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Motion State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of one two thousand twenty-two Ford F five fifty with stainless steel dump body, nine foot western snowplow and electric poly salt spreader to winter Ford in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have number fourteen, Resolution two thousand twenty-two, dash two twenty-seven, awarding a contract for the purchase of rock salt.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Motion State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of rock salt to Atlantic Salt Incorporated. The township of Lacy belongs to the Ocean County Cooperative Pricing System, whereas we have about thirty-three agencies that bid in bulk. This is a two-year contract that will expire July of two thousand twenty-four and this is anticipation of snow. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have number fifteen, Resolution two thousand twenty-two, dash two twenty-eight, authorizing the increase in the bid threshold to forty-four thousand.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Motion State of New Jersey, authorizing the increase in the bid threshold to forty-four thousand pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon eleven dash three C. This is just in accordance with state statute.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have number sixteen, Resolution two thousand twenty-two, dash two twenty-nine, opposing and proposing increase to the state health benefits program.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Motion State of New Jersey, opposing the proposed increases to the state health benefits program. Not sure if some of yous have seen the articles, the preliminary rate increase for the two thousand twenty-three local government employer group is twenty-two point eight percent, which includes twenty-one point six percent increase for active employees and a thirteen percent increase in the early retirees and a point seven percent increase in the Medicare retirees. This is across the board for all municipal increases. I know that they're looking at these numbers and hopefully this won't be the final rate. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have number seventeen, Resolution two thousand twenty-two, dash two thirty, authorizing filing of a municipal recycling tonnage grant application.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Motion State of New Jersey, authorizing the filing of a municipal recycling tonnage grant application with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. This is based on two thousand twenty-one tonnage collection rates. This is an annual grant that we receive based on our recycling amounts that are collected throughout our community and our businesses. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have number eighteen, Resolution two thousand twenty-two, dash two thirty-one, renewing membership in the Ocean County Municipal Joint Base Insurance Fund.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Motion State of New Jersey, renewing membership in the Ocean County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund. This is, every three years, we renew our membership in the Municipal Joint Insurance Fund. This is where again, bulk, bulk, we buy insurance with other municipalities and save a tremendous amount of money and they oversee our workers' comp as well. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have number nineteen, Resolution two thousand twenty-two, dash two thirty-two, authorizing the receipt of bids.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Motion State of New Jersey, authorizing receipt of bids for various equipment and services in accordance with the approved two thousand twenty-two budget of the township of Lacy. The items that we're going out to bid for within the next couple of weeks is bulk butuminous material, rentals of loaders for the fall leaf collection in the snow season and sand gravel stone as screen topsoil. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have number twenty, Resolution two thousand twenty-two, dash two thirty-three, supporting the acquisition of property identified as block forty-three twenty, lot six by the Ocean County Natural Lands Trust Fund.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Motion State of New Jersey, supporting the acquisition of property identified as block forty-three twenty, lot six by the Ocean County Natural Lands Trust Fund. This is a point nine eight acre parcel of land owned by the estate of Betty Grimaldi that the applicants have made application to the Ocean County Natural Lands Trust. The municipality that it's located in must pass a supporting resolution.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana? Yeah. Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have number twenty-one, Resolution two thousand twenty-two, dash two thirty-four, authorizing the release of a site improvement performance guarantee for road opening permit forty-seven eighty-six.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Motion State of New Jersey, authorizing the release of a site improvement performance guarantee posted by Dolphin Homes Road Opening Permit four seven eight six in the amount of eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars for nine fifty-four Meadowlark Drive.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have number twenty-two, Resolution two thousand twenty-two, dash two thirty-five, authorizing the release of a performance bond.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Motion State of New Jersey, authorizing the release of a performance bond posted for the Bamber League Basketball and Tennis Court Pavement Project. This has been reviewed by the Engineers Office. Swift and Sons has completed the project. Now we will go on to a maintenance bond. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have number twenty-three, Resolution two thousand twenty-two, dash two thirty-six, authorizing the cancellation of taxes for disabled veterans.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Motion State of New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to cancel two thousand twenty-two taxes due on a property granted to one hundred percent disabled veterans exemption and refund the resulting credit balance. This is on block thirteen sixteen lot nine, block one oh one point twelve lot one, block nineteen oh one point two zero lot thirty-five, block fifteen sixteen lot thirteen and block seven ninety-one point oh five lot three. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have number twenty-four, Resolution two thousand twenty-two, dash two thirty-seven, authorizing the placement of a lien on block one oh one point twelve, lot twenty-one.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Motion State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at nine oh nine Sour Soda Drive and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs in the amount of six hundred and forty dollars and thirteen cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have number twenty-five, Resolution two thousand twenty-two, dash two thirty-eight, authorizing the placement of a lien on block one forty-six, lot fourteen.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Motion State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at seven ten Buena Vista Road and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs in the amount of eighty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have number twenty-six, Resolution two thousand twenty-two, dash two thirty-nine, authorizing replacement of a lien on block one ninety-eight, lot two.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Motion State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at fifteen seventeen Beach Boulevard and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs in the amount of eighty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents. Motion?
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have number twenty-seven, Resolution two thousand twenty-two, dash two forty, authorizing the refund of the building department fee.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Motion State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of a building department fee issued by the Lacy Township Building Department. The amount that we're refunding is three hundred and fifty-one dollars. At six twenty-five Wilbert Avenue, the customer decided to discontinue the job.
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have number twenty-eight, Resolution two thousand twenty-two, dash two forty-one, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Motion State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have number twenty-nine, Resolution two thousand twenty-two, dash two forty-two, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Motion State of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of eleven million, eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-nine cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes. Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, item number thirty. Hope you're forced.
Right, for the month of July, the Municipal Clerk's Office collected receipts in the amount of thirty-seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. Municipal Court for the month of July collected receipts in the amount of eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents. For the month of June, the Municipal Court collected receipts in the amount of twelve thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty-six cents. Department of Public Works, road opening permits, were collecting the amount of four thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. Recycling commodity was collected in the amount of one thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty cents. And the Department of Community Development for the month of July collected receipts in the amount of seventy-three thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. Motion to accept the reports as read.
Move it, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number thirty-one. Motion to approve township meeting minutes in July fourteen, two thousand and twenty-two.
Move it, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. Item number thirty-two. Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes in July fourteen, two thousand and twenty-two.
Move it, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. Item number thirty-three. Motion to approve the Rappel license for the Rotary Club, the Forkett River, Lacey Soccer Club, and contact of Ocean and Monmouth County.
Move it, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number four thirty-four. Motion to approve Bingo license for the Lacey Upps BPOE number twenty-five eighteen.
Move it, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number thirty-five. Motion to approve the amendments of the Rappel license for the Robert Gallagher Charitable Foundation and the Order of the Friendly Sons of the Shalali Ocean County.
Move it, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number thirty-six. Resolution twenty-two twenty-two against two forty-three. Authorizing...
Nope, nope. But I do have...
Any add-ons?
Yes, I do have two add-ons. First is Resolution two forty-four. It's a resolution of Township Lacey County, motion, state of New Jersey, authorizing the execution of filing of an application to the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for the NJDCA American Rescue Plan Firefighter Two Thousand and Twenty-Two Grant. I had sent out a notice to our fire companies several weeks ago with regards to the availability of up to seventy-five thousand dollars in grant funding due to the American Rescue money. And this is for such things as equipment, such as fire turnout gear, helmets, all of those items. I have received one request from Bamber Fire Company to put in a request to receive equipment. I did not receive anything from anyone else, but they're looking for thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars for the appropriate gear, clothing, and equipment, which is critical to the firefighters. Motion?
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, anything else?
Yep, one more. Resolution Township Lacey County, motion, state of New Jersey, authorizing the employment of seasonal employee for the Recreation Department. This is making an adjustment to one of our lifeguards. We are promoting them at this time for the next couple of weeks to assistant supervisor. It would be an increase of twenty-five cents an hour for this young man, so it's about a dollar fifty a day.
Whoa. Move it, second.
There you go. Just put it out there.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, anything else?
That is all I have to add on.
Motion to committee, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things here. First of all, our fire departments on Sunday, basically the Forkett River Fire Department, did an unbelievable job out on the Parkway, and I'm told that they saved a man's life out there in a car accident that was out there. So they do a great job. All these small wells, LaLokla Harbor, I talked to LaLokla Harbor, they were manning the heliport that we had. So again, joint effort, and it's one of the great reasons why Lacey is such a great town. The other one is, this is a gentleman that I knew very, very well, Tom Dorser. He passed away suddenly, and this is a letter from Mike and John Kilmer. We all have it in our mailboxes about what a great job the LaLokla Harbor Rescue Squad did. I was shocked there, and I've known Tom for twenty-five years. Just an unbelievable man, always had a smile on his face. And I know that when these EMS hit the doors, they were working real hard. So I did have a chance to talk to Mike and John about it, and they're eternally grateful for that. What else? Okay, along to nicer topics. There's an illusionist gonna be at Gilly Park on Wednesday evening. He has performed on TV many times. I am told this guy is good. So I think it's Seven O'clock Show. I think that's what it is. I'm not quite sure. But, you know, it's a little different. We usually use the money for the concert to get this, and our recreation director, Jim, does a great job with that. So he says he likes the guy, so that's good enough for me. Again, congratulations to all the motions that we did, the tenants, and the higher level officers as we move forward, and the police departments, and the health insurance. Let me talk a little bit about this. This is devastating. Twenty-two percent, twenty-four percent, twenty percent. It doesn't matter. It's devastating. And last month, I got the package announced, we got some more energy tax receipts, about five hundred thousand. What they give us one hand, they take it away with the other hand, because if the numbers hold true, we're gonna lose somewhere in our neighborhood of one hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on this. It's gonna cost us about seven hundred thousand dollars on the health insurance, and then we got about five hundred thousand. So it's a mess. But more importantly than that, the township will survive and meet our obligation on the health insurance, but it's the employees. Their increase is going to be devastating. They will feel the full impact of inflation come the first paycheck in January. As an example, we have an employee who's a single parent with children. Looking at that one just randomly, their premiums coming out of their paycheck will double. Think about that in this time. So hopefully, somebody will do something. I had a quick conversation with Senator Connors before we came out there. He's as worried about it as we are, and you know we did the resolution tonight. Hopefully, somebody up there will make some changes and realize that this is devastating, not only in the state of New Jersey, to the employees. This is, I'm very upset about this. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Curatolo.
Thank you much. And I want to echo some of the same sentiments as Deputy Mayor McDonald. We read this and we see this, and twenty percent. I mean, you have entry-level or mid-level employees having to come out and pay this. You know, many, many years ago, I started, it was free, and it's just gone up. Only twenty-one point nine percent for an existing employee. Nothing incremental about that. How's somebody supposed to, in these times or in any times, account for that? It's patently unfair. I too have spoken to some women, and along with the rest of the Ninth District, of course, Senator Connors, some women go, always advocating, always advocating for us here in Lacey. So it's an honor to have that advocacy because of the high respect they get in Trenton. But, you know, to lay that on to somebody who is a laborer, or somebody who may be a secretary, one of our new police officers, at thirty-eight or forty-two thousand dollars. These are folks with, you saw the babies here in the events. You know, I wanted to come here tonight and celebrate the police officers, and I knew this was gonna be on the agenda. I know it bothers Deputy Mayor and all of us as much as, you know, when I took notice of it. But let's just turn to brighter days. I hope God walks with these new officers, that they're gonna protect us. I want to thank the member of Forkett River Fire Department, you know, the work that they did. We all got a text from our good colleague, Ms. Juliana, on Sunday about that. So that counts. I mean, whether it's a forest fire here, or partnering up with Mayor Amato's crew over, you know, in Berkeley, or on the Parkway, and they're extracting somebody. We love them, let's hope we never need them, but God, thank you so much that they're there. That's all my comments tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Juliana.
I don't have much, Mayor, but thank you. I just wanted to remind everybody that on August twenty-seventh is the five K that our municipal alliance runs. Heather Scallon couldn't be here tonight, so she wanted to make sure that I put that announcement out there. It starts at eight o'clock in the morning, and our wonderful police department helps out, get that, making sure all our roads are safe that day, and we have first aiders there and everything. So we're very lucky here in this town. We should always be very grateful for all of that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Kennis.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to comment, we received the tax bills in the last couple of weeks since we've been here, and I thought, I usually always check just to see how the rate went up from one year to the next. Extremely low or stable, I thought, throughout the county. I thought all levels of government did a good job. The entire rate only went up three point eight cents. That's including the local school district, our budget, the county budget, county health department, the library. I thought that was pretty stable. So I just, you know, give my accolades to all those people that, you know, craft the budget. That's a pretty good, stable budget. Couple of weeks ago, I took time out of the day, and I toured the Oyster Creek Generating Station, since I hadn't been there since the last time I was there was operating. And I kinda wanted to see what the, you know, once, you know, all the nuclear waste is in the pads, and I, you know, just wanted to get some idea. I mean, I kinda know what it looked like, but, you know, it's always better to sometimes go see these things in person. And it seems pretty secure to me. They have quite a few buildings down. It seems to be coming along smoothly, and it's monitored where the waste is stored. Seems pretty secure and stable. And my last thing, I just read a couple, you know, right before I came to the meeting, is just, we've been talking a lot about land use in town lately, and it's just, it was a marijuana retail shop wanted to open in Eaton Town. Apparently Eaton Town had three licenses to give out and say, this is not about marijuana, this is about the land, this is how difficult it is to craft the ordinances. But they issued two licenses, and the third license was denied because they wanted to open a thousand feet from a school. And they were denied. They took it to court, and the court ruled in their favor. They said that they were not a thousand feet from a school because the applicant that got denied was measuring from the building, whereas the township was measuring from the school grounds. And so the judge struck it down because it was unclear. And the point of that is not, it's not about the marijuana, you know, but, so what they have to do now is throw out all the applications, they have to make, they're making everybody re-submit. And the point is how difficult it is to craft some of these ordinances in town when we do it. Because this comes up all the time when we're doing our own ordinances. There's, it's very hard to get it right down to, you know, dot every i, cross every t, and trying to figure out exactly how it affects an applicant and how it affects the residents as well. So again, that was in today's Azure Park Press, if anybody wants to read it. Those were my comments.
I read that, thank you very much. So my comments, of course, I echo what my fellow colleagues said about the insurance increase. It's ridiculous, and hopefully smarter or fuller heads or more common sense prevails. Kudos to the Fire Company. It's interesting that they don't stop at our boundaries. You know, this took place on the Parkway, and they got out there very quickly, quickly enough to save a life. And just so everyone knows, we do have a shared service with other municipalities, so we cross boundaries and other municipalities cross boundaries to help us out with their personnel and their equipment. So we're all together. Ocean County is a very tight-knit place overall. And congratulations to all our new hires and promotions, and we'll hopefully keep on rebuilding and making our department better than it is, which is already great. And that's all I have. All in full public comment. Anyone? Anyone? The owner? This gentleman right here. Yes, you.
Go on down.
Yes, the caller and state your name for the record.
State your neighbor's address, please.
My name's Mike Bone. This is Lisa Hune, H-U-H-N, seven fifteen Beach Boulevard.
Yes.
Well, we're here for two requests. The first one is about safety along Chesapeake Drive from Beach Boulevard to Cloon Park. What Lisa and I did on the thirtieth of July was walk and ask all the neighbors whether they would participate in this petition that I have before you, to have stop signs put on Chesapeake between Beach Boulevard and Cloon Park. And I can see you shaking your head, but every single resident along Chesapeake to Cloon signed this because they know the people's speed along there going back and forth to the park. So I'm gonna give this to you and show you that everybody signed this, and I see that Veronica was shaking her head.
Well, Veronica, you know, knows the law probably better than she.
Yes, I know.
So she's an expert.
It's not able to be done like that. The manual on uniform traffic control devices, which is a federal manual, sets...
Can I step a little closer?
Yeah, sets on the regulations as to the flow of traffic. So the intersecting streets all have the stop signs, which is...
Yes, they do.
Tampa, yeah, Biscayne and all of those today. Yeah, so that is a through street, Chesapeake is. So it's about moving traffic. So the only way to prevent this speeding is obviously to get police out there and to patrol the area. It's not gonna be, we'd have to have an inch-to-year survey, and the DOT will not approve mid-block stop signs on that street like that.
Well, then I guess this petition signed by everybody on the block is nothing.
Well, it's good that you have it and we understand it, and I will speak with the chief to see if we can have additional patrols put out there and have one of the sign trailers put out there to make people aware.
Something.
Yeah, because then I know you get a lot of traffic because of Cloon Park, so you're getting some transient people, visitors who are coming to our park.
I don't care about traffic. I care about how fast.
Well, the same thing, but you're getting, you know, there are people who are coming from outside our community that might not realize the speed limit on there, you know, so I will get the chief out there to put the sign trailer out and monitor it.
But they are local people, because they're going to the park with their children, and they're speeding to the park, then they know that they're speeding, because they have to get to the park, drop off their kids, and then go somewhere else, go do whatever they're gonna do, and then race back and go pick up the kids.
And I will tell you, one of the biggest complaints that we receive from the residents in our community is the speeding in the residential neighborhoods. You're not the only one. I think this is my third petition this week alone, in different sections of town. So it's not, this is a very, very common, I don't know where everybody's going so fast, but it's very unfortunate comment.
Is there certain times during the day when it's worse than other times?
Typically, when they're going to maybe a practice or a game, trying to get the kids in.
Saturday morning to bed. Saturday morning, Sunday morning.
It's not just that.
Yeah, no, it's just like, yes, when school starts, it's gonna be in the evenings unless they start.
It's not, it's not just that. The people who have realized that live further back, and I don't know names of those, but if you went to Cloon Park, you turn left. People live out there. And they've realized, oh, look, we can use Chesapeake and race all the way to Beach Boulevard.
You can't go down Sandy Hook because they made that years ago, that landmark the one-way.
No, people are realizing that they can use Chesapeake now also to go from back there to Beach Boulevard or the reverse. So if you stand outside, like I do, and I watch, and you see the same ones going by, okay, day after day, and those are the same people who like to race all the way to the park because there's no stop signs to slow anybody down. The twenty-five mile an hour speed and the sign that's on the second block, they don't care to see that. You know, I have actually seen, by standing outside watching, someone come across on a bicycle crossways and someone going along Chesapeake, and the person on Chesapeake has to slam on the brakes because the bicycle kept on. This bicycle's just whatever they want, I mean, so, but personally, if they weren't speeding, they wouldn't have slammed on their brakes. I have personally seen this. I also see people pass on Chesapeake. Oh, no, pass.
On Chesapeake.
On Chesapeake. They're not going fast enough, so someone goes around them. You have to be there to see it. You wouldn't believe what you see. I realize there are laws that say that you can't do this. Something needs to be done.
I would speak with the chief.
And everybody that lives on other blocks that everybody speeds, says it's...
I really, like you said, most of the time it is your, I'm gonna use the word, your own neighbors in the neighborhood, and a few speeding tickets may solve the problem.
And some speed, speed monitoring, things like that. So what was...
One thing...
Yep, we certainly will.
Please, yep. The second thing is, I'm sure that everybody's talked about it, is the, and which I don't understand, because there are all kinds of laws that say you can't do this, but yet it doesn't seem like it's being enforced by anybody, state, local, anybody, is the muffler law that the state has about the noise that comes from these vehicles that are going up and down the road, that they don't really seem to care because the laws aren't being enforced by the state. You, the local, you have your own laws that say, oh, well, it makes too much noise, or... I'm not here for the noise. I'm here for the fact that there's laws that says you can't modify, but yet it seems like that's going on all the time. It almost seems like there's a competition to see who can be louder.
There is.
Is there? It seems like there's a...
Anyone who has a car that's modified, Mr. Curatolo, you know, drives one of these hot dog, one of these Challengers, you know, with a Hellfire engine, you know, it makes tons of noise. They should all be locked up, I mean.
Well, it's a quality of life that makes one on here. I understand you'd have to make a complaint for something to be done.
Well, to get pulled over, you know, basically what happens if, you know, a car that's overly loud or mis-repaired passes a police officer, they have the right to pull them over and ticket them. And that goes along with, if they're speeding. And I guess you can make a correlation between those who speed with cars that are modified, so perhaps that will help a little bit.
Well, it'd be nice if there would be some sort of enforcement. I mean, the police have a lot to do. Okay, but then, I mean, when they were having the ceremony, and I'm standing outside, I'm listening, and you can hear it just going right by the police department. So obviously, they're just squawking, it's like, I don't care what the law is.
And I just want to say something about, I've seen, I live where it is, and I just wanted to say, I do see officers sometimes sitting, I guess, trying to catch, but they're up by Route Nine. You're not gonna catch anybody speeding up there, Route Nine. They're slow, they're coming from the light, or they're slowing down because they're going to the light. So where we see the majority is...
Between the bridge and the Elks, huh?
That's right. It's crazy. They come over that bridge and...
They're taking that curve.
Let them slow on my property, they can certainly miss a pair and catch them.
Well, your mailbox has been taken out twice.
Yes, yes.
Boom, there goes the mailbox. Twice.
They come around that curve, and they just, there's been maybe five or six accidents in the past maybe seven, eight years, right on that corner beach in Chesapeake.
Oh, the two stop signs, hell.
Yeah.
Well, I asked the police, I says, maybe do some...
On both sides of the road.
The next day, there was another stop sign.
Just sitting up by, you know, up by Hometown Market, whatever, in there, you're not gonna catch anybody. They're slow coming from the light, and they're slow because they're slowing down slow coming from the light, and they're slow because they're slowing down, the light getting onto Route 9.
Between the bridge and the Elks.
More lights cheap and.
You could have a police officer somewhere between the bridge and the Elks, you'll catch them all day.
Thank you.
So that was it. We're trying to get safety for the block, which obviously she said nothing can be done about it. But it'd be nice if we could.
We're gonna get, we're gonna get the police officers there, I'm just not able to add the stop signs.
Thank you.
Okay, thank very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Santos.
Regina descended Sunset Drive, Sunny Beach. I'm very concerned about quality of life in Lacey, and in case the public hasn't heard, Lacey Township has several development projects pending for a total of 486 multifamily dwellings or units. On Thursday, August 4th, there was a special planning board meeting to add Phase 3 to the cornerstone at Lacey. Seventy more affordable housing units are now in progress, and only about 10 residents attended that meeting. This past Monday began the public hearing for the M&amp;T Lofts at Lacey application. This proposal will put 270 units inland Oka Harbor between the Carney Bank and the CVS. In addition, a strip mall, convenience store, and another gas station is also proposed, all that on 28 acres. Come for the continuation public hearing on September 12th at 6:30 PM. The covered bridge project is now in progress on the old miniature golf course near the Auto Parts store on Route 9. Seventy-eight units coming there on 7.9 acres. And the last project pending is for 68 townhomes by Dream Homes on 9.2 acres across from Applebee's. I used my calculator and the math equals 486. Now, um, do you know anything about the Dream Homes acreage you had proposed that go to Natural Lands Trust? Did they reject it?
We, basically, it's up to that applicant to contact the county.
Um, they have it?
At this point in time, now, they were conditionally approved, basically, the way, the way it is, they have to wait for DOT approval, and if there's any significant change to their plan, and I think where's the digress, they have to come back before the planning board.
Oh, if there's any alterations, they have to come back?
Exactly.
All right, well, we'll see what happens, but I'm very concerned that when the master plan was changed 10 years ago, allowing the multifamily dwellings, I don't know why something could have been done to only allow the COA multi-dwellings and not these other ones, because for years and years and years, Lacey never had townhouses, condos, apartments, and now we have a ton.
Signing the times.
All right.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else? Name and address, please.
Uh, supposed 105 Manchester Avenue. Um, couple things.
Okay, uh, point to your microphone.
Thanks. All right, a couple of things. First of all, I have the same problem. I live right here on Manchester Avenue, right across from Gilley Park, and we, we all know that the cars, it's the same, same scenario. I mean, the car is straight, it's up and down the road, there's a park right there, a big park, there's kids crossing through the park, from the schools to the park, from the apartments back here to the schools, and it's really out of control. Um, you know, I can sit up here and complain to them, boom in the face, like, I'm complaining to the police department, boom in the face. I've been over there several times already. They told me that the biggest problem is lack of police, all right, and manpower. Now, tell you what's a wonderful thing, that four officers were signed in, but obviously we need a lot more, okay? From what I'm told, there's only four officers at any given point on duty, all right, at any shift in Lacey, which is, which is really, really low. Concern of army did, has eight to 12 on any shift. So they have eight, and then they have a four-man overlap in each shift, four-hour overlap, where it goes up to 12. Okay, so first of all, I want to know, what is the, the future plans for more officers, and how soon? Because we need to start giving out tickets for these people that are speeding. There needs to be some, uh, tickets also ready for the mufflers, the modified mufflers. Um, there are kids, I mean, it's beyond modified now. What they're doing is, they're doing something with the muffler where it actually sounds like the car is constantly backfiring, and there's a few cars specific in town that they're never getting ticketed. I hear, and I hear it going down Manchester a few times a day, I can tell you exactly where the guy lives, which is only on the other side of high school, it's so loud. So something really needs to be done about this, okay? So you tell me, what are the plans for more officers and how soon?
The plans are, um, to, to continue to bring our police force up to where the Chief of Police and Ordnance Command Staff feel they should be. For instance, one, one avenue we're going to take is, there is a grant available to hire additional officers, and the, the issue being that's held us back in the past was you hire them and the grant pays for them for a period of time, and then the township must take over that, that cost. What you have to understand is, we are subject to a budget. You hire more officers, we've gotta cut elsewhere. So that's why we're, we're throwing caution to the wind, saying, you know, we're going to apply for this grant, we're gonna buy, hook or buy crook, we're going to increase the police force. Now, again, you know, the only way to really, really, really boost anything in a town is to incre, is to go what's called a referendum to exceed the 2% cap. It's all about money. You know, if we had the money tomorrow, we'd hire, we'd double.
I, I understand that, but in the same interim, we have a new complex, we have two complexes going up.
Right. What complex?
Well, you have the one on Route 9 that's, that's gonna get finalized next month. You have the other one where the old restaurant was. You have this, this other, the low-income housing that's projected, okay? And you're, and from my understanding is, standing is, that the most of the time from the police force now is being used up from, from the project over here, low-income project. This comes directly from the police force.
I don't know, directly from the, you must be talking to a different police force than we are.
We just had our annual meeting with Walters Development Group. There are other areas in town that are drawing more needs of service than the Walters Development Group.
Okay, but, 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 but the point is, is that, that we have, like, all right, now, as far as what's on the agenda for, for finalization on the project that's up here on Route 9, um, the apartment complex.
Yes.
Okay.
Luxury apartment, high-end, one and, one and two-bedroom.
Yeah, that's, that's.
One and two-bedroom. I'm just trying to clarify, you say apartment complex, which is luxury, high-end apartment complex.
I don't know about high-end, because it's at $2,000. I think it's like a $2,000 cap.
You don't want answers from me, you know, I'm trying to clarify what you're saying, and you don't wanna hear the clarification that I've given you, so I'll just let you talk.
No worries.
Nope, nope. Okay, so I, I've, I've met with the developers, I've sent in on, on the application, there are, and just so you understand, there's gonna be some adjustments to it. Now, let's understand a couple of things. We can't just say no. This is not Nancy Reagan. We can't just say no. So basically, if an applicant comes before the planning board or the Board of Adjustment, we have to have legal, legal course to deny it. We can massage it, and we have. So basically, it's going to be 200, and let me say, I left a cat in the bag, 256 units, 60% one-bedroom, 40% two-bedroom. That's what the market is calling for, just like the market's calling for.
I've been at some important meeting, I just, I just went to it.
So you've also, you've already made an accusation about the crime level in, in the affordable housing. Let, let me explain that to you as well. We have an affordable housing obligation with the state. If we don't meet that affordable housing obligation, we are subject to a builder's remedy to lawsuit. What that basically means is, a builder can come in on a, a piece of property that's not compliant and pretty, pretty much circumvent our land use laws and build whatever they want. So, you know, there are needs for this. You know, i- if we deny an applicant to build a project and it's not according to land use laws, they will simply take us to court. And what will that cost? Half a cop, you know? I mean, we, as a township committee, we don't throw money away. So we're doing everything we can to do the best we can to maintain the quality of life. As far as mufflers, listen, I'm, I'm, I'm 62 years old, and you know what? I once got a ticket for a loud muffler in Wayne, New Jersey. I have to get pulled over speeding. You know, that's really, but they, but they, you know, unfortunately, you know, is that, you know, a, a minor thing? We, we try and do the best we can, and I can assure you.
Well, it's.
If a police, if a police officer is, is, is monitoring a roadway and someone comes by, as you said, and I hear them too, blasting, you know, or, or downshifting, jake breaking, whatever you might be, with a loud muffler, you can be sure they are gonna pull them over. You go.
Okay. All right, so you made your, you made your points, so totally, totally agree with you on, on everything that you said, okay?
Well, thank you.
I understand that you have your hands tied, but it comes from a lot of frustration. Living here for 15 years on Manchester Avenue, and I'm just seeing it getting worse and worse and worse. It's right here in your backyard. I got, I get passed, I've got passed on Manchester roads, by cars. My wife gets figured and beat at every time she pulls in the driveway. I know when she's home, it's so bad.
I would say part of the problem, Manchester Avenue, there's nowhere to, there's nowhere to, uh, you know, do like a, you know, police trap. No, no, there, there's nowhere to really sit. They gotta get, sit in.
They can sit on the grass, right in front of the park, it's a low curb. They could park right there in, in the woodchips. There's so many places. We've been through this. We're in the process, literally, filming the cars and putting together a whole presentation. That's how bad it is.
Again, we'll bring it up to the chief, we'll talk to the chief.
Yeah, I've already spoken to, I've spoken to the chief there, I've spoken to a lieutenant there, I've spoken to officers there, because they immediately bring out an officer that covers Manchester for that day, and it, and it just gets nowhere. You know what they do? They point a finger at you guys. That's what they do, just so you know.
And the luck's out here.
And you're right, you know.
It's our responsibility to do the best we can to increase the police force so we can, we can best monitor traffic safety, crime, everything else that goes along. It's our job, and you ask me what we're doing, and I explain to you what we're doing.
All right.
We, you know, we're doing the best we can from a budgetary standpoint, to hire as many officers as we can, to the point now, we're hoping that things get better, and that's why we're applying for the grant I mentioned, and even though in the future we'll have to take on the responsibility and the obligation of their salaries at a much higher rate, because of course, as they go on and, and go through their steps, it goes more and more. So we're committed, um, we're committed to, to increasing the force. Um, I, I'm sure everyone knows by now that, that our chief is retiring. Um, we are in the process of interviewing the command staff to determine what direction we're gonna go, and one thing that we do when we sit down with those individuals, we ask them, what is your vision of the future of the police department? And I've been here for, well, I wasn't here when they hired, uh, Mr. Bell, but I was Chief Bell, and I was here when we hired Chief Nally, I was here when we hired Chief Paparota. And what we did was, we did the best we can to give them the tools they needed to fulfill their vision. So if you've spoken to the lieutenants, the chief, they're well aware of the, of the, of the system and the problems that exist in this township, and again, we'll do whatever we can to give them the proper tools to do the best we can. I mean, that's.
I just apologize for yelling loud, it's just.
We're not getting loud, we're not getting loud.
Serious frustration, it's just really, I mean, I can't tell you how frustrated.
We're frustrated too.
With it. I, you know, a couple of kids get killed already down there on Haynes, right at the intersection, you know? So we don't, we don't wanna see anybody from the park get hurt.
Yep.
Or anybody else. And then the second thing, it's, it's a touchy subject, to say the least. So I have a question for Mr. Connors, okay? So we have the zoning board meetings, okay, and we have the township meetings.
You're just talking zoning or planning, it's three different meetings.
Plan, planning.
Township meeting, planning board, then zoning board of adjustment.
Plan, planning. Yeah, the one that was, that was this week. Okay, so my question to you is that, Mr. Connors, so my question.
I understand, he's not a planning board attorney.
No, I know that. I'm talking to township attorney about this, because I think this is a township matter, not a planning. Okay? So my question to you is that, the committee here, under no circumstances, is supposed to be involved with that meeting, correct?
Say that again.
Could you speak into that mic?
Is the committee here, maybe I'm misunderstanding it, and I'm, I'm asking him as a question, but a question, okay?
Now, the zoning board.
The zoning board is a zoning, is, we had the meeting the other night.
Which was the planning board, which two members of the governing body sit on the planning board by statute. The zoning board is quasi-judicial and have no members of the governing body or the municipal employees on it.
Okay.
So maybe you're getting the two confused.
Yeah, maybe I get, I love.
So Monday night, when the Lofts were here and you were here, I believe, were you just here Monday night, or were you?
I wish you was, you were.
Yeah, so yeah, that's the planning board, and you have one municipal employee by statute, the mayor or the mayor-designee, and one committee member by statute. And then you have other classes, which are general members of the public on the planning board. And again, the zoning board of adjustment, which is.
But if you're not on that planning board, then you're not part of that meeting unless you step in front of the mic.
So, yes, if Mr. Geratolo or Mr. McDonald, yes, he would have to come to the microphone, correct?
You'd have to correct, you'd have to, all right. Any, any, any one of you, except for Mr. Dykoff, I think Mr. Kenneth is here.
Correct, you're correct.
Okay, but that, that's not what I witnessed, okay? So my question is to Mr. Connors, what are the ramifications if somebody does have interaction with that planning board that's on this committee outside of the people we just mentioned?
I would have specific, I, I.
Well, you're, you're the town attorney, but you would know.
Let him speak, see, keep interrupting, let him speak.
I would need specific details. I can't get, I'm, I'm not gonna answer hypothetically. I would need specific details in an inquiry as to what kind of application it was, and so.
Okay, so I'll, I'll, I'll tell you exactly what it was, okay? I really don't want it to go anywhere, I just don't want it to happen again.
Oh, so TV.
So a TV.
What I witnessed is, I'm, I'm sure it was, um, how do you say it? In the right intention, but I, I can't, I can't allow it to go anywhere else, okay? With wrong intentions. And what I witnessed was, we had a break, okay, from the meeting, when the developer's attorney went outside, they call us a client, okay, so he took a break, you're well aware of this, and then they came back in, okay? I witnessed Mrs. Luray.
That's correct.
Outside, talking to the developer.
Yes, and I had asked them to really consider going to the 256 units like I was asked to do by members of the planning board.
Yeah, but why?
I'm not elected official though.
I'm not an elected official, I'm an employee of the township.
You're an employee of the township, but you're not on the, the planning board.
Yeah, so I was asked by a member of the planning board to please consider, have them consider reducing the number of units that night.
But why? If that was the case, that was, that's a sideline conversation with them outside in the parking lot, and then you came in here.
That was the same thing that every member in here was asking them to do.
We had asked that of the applicant in public.
And you guys announced it publicly, they announced it publicly.
Actually, it's Mr. Quinn reported off, and he, and he had asked if they were considered going down to 256. And they had gone out to speak to their client, so Ms. Luray went out there, you know.
Okay, but look, boy, you have to hear me out. My point is this, okay, is that, under no circumstances, all right, I, I feel, now you tell me how legal matters, this is correct, under no circumstances should anybody from the planning board, okay, or the committee be talking to these people off mic during a meeting, during a meeting session, especially during a recess, and then coming back up and squatting behind the dactydeus and talking to the gentleman about what was discussed outside of the public hearing and on mic. You know what I'm saying?
And what was discussed was that the.
Regardless, regardless, listen, my point is this, is that something like this, to me, is wrong, okay? Let the public decide, something like this is wrong and it shouldn't go any further. If, yes, something is to be said, there's no reason why it couldn't have been said once the developer came back in, okay, on the mic. So everyone in the room can witness it, can hear it, and it's recorded. Am I correct by saying that?
So I underst, I understand the, maybe the optics of it, but it was all recorded when he came back in, he relayed it, he wasn't able to get a hold of, it was all.
Yeah, but we, it's all hearsay. What, what, what Mrs. Luray is saying is hearsay. You can laugh all you want about it, but, but, but it is, it is hearsay.
You made accusations that are, just like the accusation you made about the affordable housing, so.
Now, now, now you're, now you're, you're doing, you're doing a spin.
No, I'm not doing a spin, sir.
No, yes, you are, you're doing, you're doing a spin because.
You can feel that way, but I, I don't agree.
I mean.
I, I.
You should, you know, you, what you should do is you say, you say, you know, Mr. Post, you're right, we won't allow, everything will be on mic for, for hearing.
You want me to, you insist, I, I.
No, 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 all right, don't agree, don't, don't agree with it, okay? In the meantime, we'll allow it to continue, okay? And then, whatever's said doesn't have to be on mic, there can be a sideline bargaining deal, whatever, and then I'll, I'll find out the legal matters of it by myself.
You're welcome.
Okay, and we'll just go to that route. I didn't wanna go there because we could have just said, we just said, it's fine, it's fine, but, you know.
In that particular circumstance, I don't see anything inappropriate.
You don't see anything inappropriate.
In that particular circumstance, made of the fact that you had presented here.
You can bring it up, pump them next planning board, which I will, and, and at the end of the meeting, what you can do, I welcome this, you can, there's a public comment at the end of the meeting, you can get up and you can ask the planning board attorney, who has jurisdiction over the planning board, what his opinion is.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments, Mr. Bender?
Barry Bender, semi.
You see my text before when you were standing out there?
Yes, yes, thank you.
I said, it should clear out, because you looked like you were leaving tonight, wanting to hide out.
No, I don't. Once I get here, I don't leave. Okay. Uh, Barry Bender, semi-historic Bay Avenue.
Semi?
Well, because the house is out there, it had to be that.
I guess there's a story.
Anyway, uh, I had a question on one and, and a couple of comments. 233, the, the property that's being donated to the County Natural Lands Trust Fund, where, is that out in the?
It's way out there.
Okay, I just wondered.
Block 4,000, right?
Yeah, mo, most of this stuff is usually that, okay?
I don't even, they own everything around it, because it's less than an acre.
So they just took one little piece and donated it?
Well, well, what I'm saying is, the county owns the majority around it, and it's like in the middle of what they own.
So now they're making it ridiculous.
Yes, yes, it just, yeah.
Gotcha. The comment, well, actually, this is number, uh, 229. A subject close to my heart, the health benefits program. Everywhere, people are getting, I'm gonna use the word, screwed over with their medical benefits, okay? You're paying more, you're getting less, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. People need to start thinking out of the box and coming up with another plan, because this is ridiculous. They're gonna, there, there are people dying left and right, okay, because their healthcare providers, private industry, okay, is making them pay more and giving them less, and people are dying because they're not getting the coverage they need to get. You got insurance companies dictating what medicines you'll take. Step therapy, where you have to try this, and this, and this first, before you can take the medicine that your doctor friggin' prescribed. It has to change. This is not just us here in Lacey Township, okay? It's nationwide, and it has to change. And it's got to change sooner. There'll be more people dying, okay? During COVID, what was it? 300, what was it? How many people died during COVID because of a lack of healthcare? Ridiculous, okay? Just wanted to put the, the two cents in. The folks, they didn't come back. I know years ago, there was discussion, and what we can't do is, I don't, I think we can do it now. Speed bumps?
You have to basically regrade almost every single road in town in order.
No, I'm not talking about every single road, I'm talking about.
No, but still, you have to regrade the entire road. It's not just a matter of putting a bump in the road. And then there's been several lawsuits in cases where somebody hits a speed bump because they're speeding still or whatever, and towns haven't gotten sued.
Really, like people who spilled hot coffee in their lap.
Exactly, the McDonald's theory, exactly. And that's why a lot of towns frown away from it because of the insurance costs and everything on that.
I know the ones down the road on, on, uh, East Lacey Road, where the, what do they call them? The mansions or whatever down at the end? They used to have those screw-in ones there.
Yeah, those, yeah, that's private property though.
Oh, okay, all right, okay. Uh, just wanted to make one other comment, and this is a personal comment. Uh, I consider my children very good citizens and really good people, and I, um, credit some people in the school system for that, and Mr. Dorsa was one of those people.
Absolutely.
I thank him, he took care of my kids in, in every way possible, and, and he is very, very, very sorely missed.
You know, I'm, I'm going to, just something I, I, I neglected to, to bring up and ask. I, I attended the, uh, the graduation, high school and the middle school graduation, and I sat on the, on the stage, and I sat, um, at high school graduation in the back row in front of faculty and guidance counselors, and how, how they all got up as certain children, and, and most of them got up and they hugged them, and they, and, and I leaned over to one, I says, yeah, you don't care, this is just a job to you, and it's, it's really not just a job. You know, you can see, you can see the, the caring in, in their actions, you know, for the children. Um, it was, it was really heartwarming.
Yeah, well, in particular, Mr. Dorsa, for my, my two children, I have twins, and for my two children, he went above and beyond it. God bless him.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Proper out.
I'm here as the holder's representative.
Name and address, please.
Jim Hughes, uh, Lucina Avenue, Forkett River. Uh, I'm just, I was at the planning board meeting Monday too, I just had a couple of comments about it, actually, uh, because, um, I wanted to commend the members at the planning board, Mr. Lattelier, the other gentleman there in the orange shirt, they're seasoned.
Neo-Marine.
A whole lifetime of service to Lacey, and, and they were taking them to task, the developer and every, 10 pounds, you know, you know, what, in a five-pound bag, bringing up fire, uh, you know, issues with the fire engines and stuff like that. And I was sitting in the back, and I, you know, these, the, the men, the planning board doesn't have the advantage of having a small army of suits and ties and laptops, like mission control from NASA back there, the Apollo 13 mission, that's what it was reminding me, frantically typing, you know, I did it. But, um, a couple of things, you know, that was mentioned to the, to the engineer, actually, was, one question was like, how are you going to preserve the wetlands back there? He goes, well, we're gonna, we're gonna, we can't put mulch because our tenants drove cigarettes and start fires, so we'll put gravel, and it's like gravel and mulch and 256 units, I don't know if that preserves wetlands exactly. But even more than that also is, the real numbers here, I mean, we're talking about what all these developments, maybe an additional four, 5,000 cars on, you know, because you have multifamily dwellings, right? So picture each, I mean, there's at least maybe two or three cars per dwelling, maybe possibly? That's a lot of cars, you know, and I mean, it's, and then, of course, it really falls back to, we're talking about health insurance costs. What it's going to do to our property taxes, because you're going to have to increase the police force, it's going to strain the schools, it's going to strain, I mean, I'm preaching to the choir here, I know, but, but it's, um, you know, it's just, it's a major concern. We're becoming the city of Lacey now, really. Have to change a lot of signs around town, including, get a finishing carpenter for this icon right here, but, but, um, that's just my thing, really, you know, I just, and I, ma'am, I agree with you, I'm sorry. I was going to say, ma'am, I agree with what you said at the last meeting, because social media in town is all up in arms about it. But you see empty seats.
There you go.
And it's like, it's a shame, really, because they'll be the people sitting in traffic complaining, why did they build this here for? And I even told them once, I go, listen, go and, and speak your mind, and, you know, that's, people are complacent, I guess, I don't know what it is, but they, they wait for it to land on them before they try and get out from under it. But, but either way, you know, like I said, I've been in this town for like 30 years, whatever it is, and it's a nice place. I just hate to see it turn into brick or, you know, Toms River, and I know you're doing what you can, but, but I do commend those. They, they're seasoned guys, I mean, I, you know, they, they know their stuff, so. But anyways, you know, you know, I just want to see, you know, uh, high-priced lawyers and high-priced engineers and, and, you know, the, the people that were sitting in the room that night, they're like salt of the, you know, salt of the earth residents of this town, you know? Senior citizens, people with young families and stuff, and a lot of that language, of course, you know, uh, caffè, and it's, it's very tough on the layman to understand. And I, you know, like, especially one older gentleman, he was up in years, and I, I could tell that it was just to him, it was, might as well have been, you know, Iranian or something, but, but anyways, that was just my piece, so.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much.
Anyway, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Now you're done then.
I didn't even come up with what you were saying.
Come on.
I'll reintroduce Barry Bender, I'll say it the right way, Historic Bay Avenue. Um, what, what Jimmy was talking about, this DOT thing about, and, and if you can give me the right terminology, mayor, the DOT thing about if it's 100, less than 100 cars, they have no concern?
So basically, well, it's interesting you bring that up, so, so I'm going to give you what I learned a little bit. So when, um, so when an applicant comes before the, the township committee, we can't take into consideration a couple of things. We can't take into consideration traffic, traffic, uh, levels. We can't take into consideration the, the effect on the schools, we're not permitted. So let's talk about, uh, and something that someone might have heard. They, um, the, the applicant for the Lofts of Lacey were exempt from a traffic impact study, and the reason being, it's daily trips. So for instance, when an applicant comes before the DOT, they, they, the DOT, um, requires them to do one of three improvements. A minor, a major, and a major with design. So for instance, the Home Depot, the Home Depot, they, has to do, had to do a traffic impact study, and it's based on the amount of trips. So they had to do a major with design. If you listen to the application applicant, they are exempt from that because the proposed level of trips were below 100, whatever I'm being. So, you know, and, and I, I have asked some people, and I, I know from my personal experience. I live, I live on, let's, let's say, and I'm, I'm not going to call out Seabreeze, but I'm going to call out Seabreeze. I'm not talking about those, those, those folks there. So the interesting part, I asked this individual, I says, when you're leaving your development, how many cars are normally in front of you? Two or three? Okay, I live in Sunrise Beach. So Sunrise Beach, that's a pretty, pretty, no, how many houses in Sunrise Beach? I have never had to wait more than one cycle of a light. Laurel Boulevard, I go to the little smoke shop to buy cigars, I pull out of Laurel Boulevard, that windy, windy entrance. How many homes in, in, in LA? How, I never have, I never have to wait more than one, you know, light. So, yes, it, it, it feeds cars onto it, but when they gaze the amount of trips, it's not as many as you would think.
Right.
So while there might be 256 units, all those people aren't going to leave at the same time.
Unless something goes on at the police.
Unless something goes on. And again, the interesting part, what they're focusing on are, because they're one-bedroom, are the people who are working from home.
Right.
That's what they're trying to go for. So, you know, but will, will, will that project add to the schools? Well, of course it will, to a certain degree, but not as much as, you know, I, I, as people might say it will. So, so, yeah, now what I am adamantly against, you know, I, I, I travel Route 9 every day, morning, noon, and night, and, and my opinion, from when you enter, um, Lacey Township from Bayville till when you get to Lacey Road and Route 9, the traffic flows pretty good for a couple of reasons. Well, of course, Walmart has improved the, the roadway in front of their, in front of their store. Home Depot has improved up in front of their store, and then we've got the Raro Right-Away, and then, of course, we've got the improvements at Lacey Road and Route 9. You know, one day, if we're lucky, we might be able to finish Raro Right-Away, and that will be a nice bypass, and hopefully that will alleviate some of the pressure on Route 9. South of Lacey Road, you know, now, having said that, um.
That's where I live.
We, we had a meeting with Congressman Chris Smith about possible improvements in the future. And what, and, and interestingly enough, Congressman Smith and Congressman Van Drew both voted for the infrastructure bill last year. They crossed party lines, and they took some heat for it, but I said, is there, you know, you guys voted for it, can you get us some money? And of course, the, the key is what's called a shovel-ready project. So what we've got to start doing, again, we discussed it, we are starting, we're going to start an initiative to redo the master plan, and hopefully, when we do that, we'll, we'll start to impose restrictions on setbacks and so on and so forth. So in the future, if there is funding available from the federal, you know, federal government, the state, the county, we can, we can widen that. Will that be in my lifetime? But guess what? You know, I mean.
I'm older than you.
I mean, you're older than me, a lot of things, we've been waiting a long time for a lot of things. We started the initiative to build the Raro Right-Away 20 years ago, and look how long it took. Um, I still am confident, hopefully, that now with, with, um, with MNT, that we might have an avenue to finish that, and, and again, that will help. It just takes time, but, you know.
Just to me, the, the point I was making is that the, the 100 cars thing doesn't take into account how much traffic is on the roadway to begin with, which is wrong.
The current traffic.
Yeah, absolutely, that's, that's the point I was trying to make, so, just wanted to.
Wish, wish we can, hopefully, the, the DOT will see it your way and, and require improvements. Um, hopefully, with more commercial development, and the DOT.
Well, the front is all commercial there.
The DOT, again, the DOT will, will require a greater design for traffic flow, and that might help more. And, and as you go along, you know, little by little.
And I do have to add that, you're getting, we're fortunate, I think we're fortunate to have both the Home Depot and Walmart, despite what a lot of people do not like. So you have everybody coming, I mean, after Sandy, you could, everybody in town should have been pleased that we had a Home Depot.
That's right.
Um, and a Walmart, frankly. So you're getting all those people, the, the closest Walmart or Home Depot are in Lacey Township. So I, I would say that's probably driving more of the traffic on 9 than anything else.
But as we add more cars and add more people in town.
But that's what roads are for, I don't know, what, what are you supposed to do with them? Like, line cars?
Roads are, roads are for two things, they're for people to live on.
Not, not Route 9.
Well, right, well, what you just said.
Well, I said, it's a mix, yeah. It's a.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, well, that's.
It's a slippery slope.
Yes, it is, absolutely. Just wanted to say the 100-car thing to me, if you don't look at the traffic that's there already, it's absolutely ridiculous, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Seeing non-motion to close the floor.
Second.
Motion, uh, first, uh, resolution, uh.
2022, that's 24030, authorizing convening and executive session.
Resolution, township Lacey, county, version, state, and Jersey, authorized in convening and executive session to discuss matters of, um, real estate and anticipated, uh, contractual matters. Motion?
Move it.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?[1792.22]